And the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nine o'clock up, I'll start the session. Do you have a couple additions to the agenda?
I do, I have two additions, airport management agreement, and Dorwig would like to give us an update on the census.
Is there any public comment at this time unrelated to the agenda? Yeah, we'll just go down the item. First thing is the public hearing on our budget for 2015, 2016. Couple months ago, we, the budget committee, uh, not adopted, but-
Approved.
Approved a budget for the upcoming year, and it's out there for public comment. If they may, I'll leave the hearing open at this time. Jill, you exempt from any public comment, thank you. So with the budget hearing open and on the floor, the next item is elder abuse, but that's nine fifteen time. So I'll drop down to the untimed items. The first item is a work group formation request. Did Jake come to be here?
He is, I'm not sure that he's in the building at this time.
Well, we'll jump on down. We'll cover a thing that you're up to speed on, public transit division agreement.
Sure. So what this agreement is for is for our Ladders of Opportunity grant that we received funding for to purchase our vans. We just have to sign an agreement that we will follow all of the rules associated with federal and state regulations. We'll be purchasing two vans. The total amount that the county can be reimbursed for is $105,000 and for, uh, 105,400 for, um, for the vans. We can spend up to $124,000, which we won't, but... Those vans actually will go to Andrea, the seniors in it, by transportation from various parts of our county, so I want to point her out. She's doing a fantastic job of, you know, that speed on transportation.
So with that, Denise, any other update related to that, since Andrea's here on her vehicle?
Um, Joni will be here later this month. She's going to be bringing two representatives with her. We're going to be spending some good quality time with Andrea, going over their program, since she is our largest provider. Just making sure that she's up to speed on things, I'm up to speed on things.
The two vans, will they be stationed in what part of the counties with us, so?
One's going to be here in the south end of the county, and it's going to be serving Plushay Dell, Pine Creek, Westside, and Valley Falls. The other van will be stationed in Summer Lake and be handling Paisley area north. And they are ADA accessible, so the rules-
With a lip print.
Matt's going to cut down on the big bus, we use quite so much.
That is correct. Get our bus parked in Christmas Valley. We're actually in the process of, um, getting things. We actually are approved for our bus filter as of last week, so we're going to be moving forward on that until July 1. Get our bus stopped there, get our bus, and get the vans.
And we'll hold this for extension tomorrow?
Correct.
She's got the copy to, the copy replacement.
Okay. So the copier replacement, the machine currently in use in the district attorney's office is due. Her lease is going to be up at the end of this month. Um, in the past, the district attorney, our past district attorney handled his own lease, and the machine that he got really wasn't compatible with our system and whatnot, so, I mean, the district attorney has agreed to work with me to make sure we get what we need in place. Their upgraded machine is a lot like the one that you guys approved for the commissioner's office. Actually, it's the exact same machine with four drawers, because they do use multiple different kinds of paper. And it doesn't increase, the cost of the machine is like $20 more a month than the one that they have now. But it is color, so that they don't have to have any make copies of things that probably should not be.
Where does she, your show is actually a savings?
When I looked at the lease, that wasn't, that wasn't the case, but-
Yeah, we'll have to have tomorrow to-
Okay.
To the audience, the DA office, he's a state employee, but we provide the room and equipment and services and things of that nature. Just a few minutes before nine fifteen. Should we cover the KCC?
Sure.
Will it be a good one, because we are still in our public hearing for budget? On the KCC contract, they had asked for an increase. Our maximum cap last year was 22,000. This year, our maximum cap is 25,000, so it will require a little change to our budget before final adoption, so.
For anybody on the audience, including- We have out of district contracts at KCC. In other words, we're not part of their taxing district, so we contract with them, provide services, at least in the southern part of Lake County. COCC, our van, covers the northern part of the county. And they have, they actually only have a taxing district, but, oh, COCC, COCC, yeah, whereas we're contract out services. And their enrollment has been steadily growing, so it's, we increase in our cap to, that's our contribution. Jill?
And just to add on, you're right, COIC handles the north end, but we're also putting in the equipment. The classes can go throughout the whole county, so Paisley will get the equipment, and so Northlake School get the equipment.
And that's an equipment purchase through USDA, just a utility service.
Matched by a minor memorial grant.
Just to get this for the record right, Jill, that CO, we got too many COs, COCC.
COCC, okay, yeah, I see.
Yeah, as opposed to a work source provider. So Denise, just a question, it's not so much about this contract, but we are raising allowable amount. But at our last meeting with the president of KCC, it seemed like we were looking at 19,000 for this year as the actual goal. Has that been-
I have not said.
Okay. Thank you.
Still a few minutes before, whoops, four minutes, before nine fifteen. Is Rick going to be here on the road grader?
I can, I can do that. Our roadmaster has requested, and it's been approved, uh, that we have approved to pursue the purchase of a new road grader. I want to find it here. He sent us all a little update yesterday, or last night on the purchase. He's going to purchase one road grader and trade in two old model road graders, and save the county through the process of the public contracting rule exemption, approximately $13,000. And doing it this ways, it's in conjunction with some other purchases going on in other counties. So we'll be dealing with that more tomorrow.
Basically, working with other county governments, we can do something other than to standard contract a little bit. We can work with other governments and get this costing back here. Anne, we've still got a few minutes on, can you cover the budget?
Yes, and a few resolutions-
This is different than hearing on the public, on the public hearing for next year's budget.
And a few resolutions reported this morning that address the 2014, 2015 budget, that need appropriations adjustments. I'm going to ask that we table the resolution for the communications fund, which is number 2014-11. There's some more purchases that have been, and services that have been paid for, so I don't know that I've allowed for enough appropriations authority there. I need to talk with Lieutenant Paul. So the first one on your list is 2014-09, for the Central Services Department, in looking at salaries. I'm not exactly sure why, but it's going to be just barely short. And so, in the spirit of the budget law, we need to increase the salaries appropriation, but we can decrease materials and services and maintain the same level of expenditure. I was trying to figure out if there was more working days, because this person is paid hourly, so I was, is there one more working day that made that happen? I could quite deal with that one out. 2014-10 is another appropriations transfer. This one's for the Business Services Department. There's overtime incurred with this department, getting reporting done at certain times of the year, and also our budget minutes, our budget committee minutes. They have savings in materials and services as well, so they maintain the same level of expenditures, just increase salaries and decrease materials and services. So again, I'd like to table 2014-11 until I have more information on that fund and understand the expenditures through June 30.
So we won't actually deal with that tomorrow?
No, if you, I don't know if you want to yank that out or scratch it out, or-
I'll take it across the table.
Okay, thank you. Uh, 2014-12 is unanticipated revenue for the Fair Board Fund. I've been here discussing the Fair Board Fund in the past. Now, we still have a salaries issue with their reorganization, but we also have a little bit of overtime in conjunction with the fair, but also because they helped with our Veterans Memorial. They will get revenue to offset that overtime for the Veterans Memorial, so this is an unanticipated revenue resolution. The amount is not just because of that overtime, so to clarify, this will increase salaries by $4,000. It's not solely due to the overtime on the Veterans Memorial. It's kind of a combination, like I said, the reorganization with their two full-time staff members, overtime that was worked over fair, plus this, also insurance coverage. So there's a lot going on in their salaries department that requires a little bit more appropriation authority. Is that clear?
Well, it, it is, and, you know, once again, James did a tremendous, wonderful job in working with Leanne, but I understand their salaries, so what have, due to some increases in compensation. But when they're working out here, I understood they were working under one of Dave's management codes, you might say.
So all of our costs for the Veterans Memorial are in Fund 103, which is our capital projects. But there are no salaries budgeted there, so when we-
Gotcha, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
If, if we do that in the future, that would allow that type of-
Yeah.
2014-13 is another unanticipated revenue resolution. This is for adult community corrections. They had more revenues than anticipated due to a couple different factors. Just one, state funding for this function has been increasing. And then they also had the justice reinvestment dollars, that we were unsure how would be incorporated and be spent on the ground. Now we have a program in place for the treatment court. This resolution increases their salaries and then increases their state revenue. They had a salary increase also because they had staffing changes as well, so to make that transition occur, there was a little bit of a salary burden. The last resolution, 2014-14, is in the matter of an unnecessary fund elimination. We had set up Fund 231 for the mental health grants. They contained the stock grant and the DFC grant. Those grants have now concluded. We are not, you know, renewing those grants, they are done for their life cycle. So this resolution would allow us to close that fund out and transfer the remaining dollars, which is $87, to the Mental Health Operating Fund, which is, was used for the startup. Okay? One question before, I don't know if you're on a timed item. I want to confirm the budget adoption date. Originally, we had planned for your next regularly scheduled commissioner meeting, which would be June 17th, I think. There was a proposal made at one point in time to push it back a week for the adoption. What, what's the preference?
Do you see any issue on the, well, there is an issue. We don't have a meeting that week, the following week, past the 16th, 17th, the work session we're going to meet. We don't have a work session on the 23rd.
Okay, so I need to keep the original date?
Yeah, I think so. And I think everybody's, you know, that had concerns about making any changes with SRS coming in and other things. I think we're, I think we're good to go.
On the 17th, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Anne. It's a few minutes past line 15, elder abuse proclamation. Jill?
Hi, commissioners. So I actually want to turn it over to the folks who actually serve the seniors in Lake County. So we have the Senior Health Navigator, we have the Senior Center represented. Elton and Kim are from your Area Agency on Aging, and then we have our APD, Department of Human Services here, too. So this is our APS worker, Adult Protective Services worker. She'd like to just present you with some reports to look at later, and maybe some stats for Lake County.
So I don't really know what's in here. I was kind of glancing real quick, she candidated to me, but it looks like they're kind of old, and the reason why, I wanted to just take a chance to explain, that when you look at those stats, it looks like the numbers are low. But I just wanted to give you real quick. So far this year, I began doing some community outreach right about the time of the end of February, and since then, I've had 12 or 13 elder abuse cases since the end of February, four of which law enforcement are actively working with me on. That's more than all that we had last year. And it's not that it's increased, maybe it is a little bit, but it's just that nobody is reporting. And so, part of what I'm doing this year is reaching out to law enforcement, reaching out to the community, and trying to express how important it is that people report, because I think that, just because we're dealing with adults, people sometimes think that adults are not as vulnerable as children, so. But yeah, some pretty scary stats for a very small community so far, and it's not, I got three in one day last week, so.
When it says small community, you're talking about countywide?
I'm just meaning, yeah, and just because they're all, I'm sure, we're not getting reports from what's happening all through Lake County. Our reports are coming all within the small community of just Lakeview. So I'm sure that there is a lot going on countywide, and we're just not getting any of those reports. All I'm seeing is what's happening here in Lakeview, so, because every case I've had has just been in Lakeview, so.
So the only way we're able to monitor that is if they, they, the affected individual reports it?
Yes and no. It would be nice if people knew who to report and who to reach out to when they feel that this kind of treatment. First off, a lot of people, they hear elder abuse and they think physical abuse. They don't realize that there's six or seven different elements of abuse, all the way down to verbal. Adult Protective Services, we function differently than other protective services, so verbal treatment, mistreatment of an elder, it ranges anywhere from verbal assault to just using profanity at them. We go out and investigate every single one of those, too. I can assure you that none of those are being reported. Everything that we're being reported is some pretty severe financial and neglect cases, so. Law enforcement, mandatory reporters, bankers, tellers, attorneys now, the mandatory reporting list got updated at the beginning of this year, and I think some people don't realize what that means, and, like attorneys, they don't understand, like, what does that mean? And how does that affect them in the mandatory reporting? So if they're working at wills, trusts, changing in people's assets, they don't, sometimes it kind of feels weird what they're seeing, but they don't know who to report that to. And so now, by reaching out and letting law enforcement know, hey, if you go out there and this doesn't fall under your scope, but it doesn't seem right, call us, because if it falls under our scope, we can take care of it. And that's where a lot of this is coming from, is now the police are starting to make sure that they're reporting to us when they go out on calls, or if they do traffic stops, or if they just kind of hear. Finally, I think with us just being here, me having a presence here, I've been here a lot lately, people are starting to listen. And when they hear people talking, neighbors talking, now it's starting to kind of trickle through. And I'm sure we're going to be seeing a lot more, again, not because I feel that it's an increase of the abuse itself. It will be, because we're going to be getting baby boomers soon, and it's gonna, we're going to see an increase, because the population of the elders are going to increase. But I just think that people are starting to become more aware now, and we're trying to do a better job at educating everybody what to look for.
So when you say, I'm sorry, Jill?
I was just going to say, it's a good introduction, the Aging and Disability Resource Center, the ADRC, which is about to roll out in our region. There is a Gatekeeper role, if you'd like to, Mandy, did you have anything else you want to share? Did you want to share about the awareness campaign for, for Gatekeeper?
I'm Kim, Estes, from, from Lake. The Gatekeeper program, I'll talk about in a second, but just, I just wanted to say a few words about, this is going to be national elder abuse on June 15th, but, oh, I need one of those, Jill, sorry, you took them all. And it's really nice for our community leaders to know about a day, one day a year that we're supposed to be aware of what's going on in our community, but really, you need to give your community tools on what you're going to, what you can do about our abuse. So what I'm handing out right now is actually, anybody in your community can do these things to be more aware about what's going on with our seniors. I'm not, I'm not going to read them all, you can, you can read them yourselves, but it just gives you a tool to use all year round, not just one day a year to know that you need to be more aware of-
That's three hundred sixty-five days a year.
Yeah. So, and then, what Jill talked about was the Gatekeeper program, and we've already, our caseworker in our office has been over here last week to, to do some education into some of your companies here. And what this is, is, it's educating, like, your postal workers, your people in the store, anybody who comes in contact with a senior, to be aware, is something going on different with this client? Is something not quite right, and they're not answering their door right now? You know, their lawn's overgrown, and it's never been in their whole life, so these are signs that the people in your community can actually do something, and call this ADRC number, it's, it's an Oregon number, punch in your zip code, and it gives you every resource in your community. So it gives you somebody to call, or APD, or whoever in the state agencies. They're not always comfortable doing that, so they want to help on their own. So this gives you, we've plugged into a database, every resource in Lake County that we know of, and if there's, Elton has been very helpful in, in giving us all the resources. So you can give this person's name to this number, and then someone will check up on you. So it's really going to be a good tool. They've been doing this across all of Oregon, except for this side, the east side of Oregon, for a long time, and it works really well, so we're really excited that it's finally coming to the rural areas, so.
So, Kimmy, you kind of answered one of the questions I had for Mandy, when you talked about the educational aspect besides the law enforcement. You are reaching out to all these other entities and sharing this information, and what to look for. Where's the line when we talk about elder? What, what's, who's elder?
Well, for my agency's definition, it's 60 and over, and it could be anybody in your life that's 60 and over. Or somebody with a disability also. It's, it's any six, you know, anybody that has a disability.
Less than 60?
Yes.
Now, perused the proclamation earlier, signs of animal abuse, can you expand on that?
Certainly, go ahead.
Clamath Hands and Words Are Not For Hurting is a big movement that has identified the linkage between animal abuse and the tendency to abuse humans. It's actually a first sign, almost a category step up, if you can say. So animal abuse, training our animal providers and that response team that respond to that, to identify what other abuse might be happening in a home. The linkage directly, the statistics are actually quite staggering as far as the research of when animal control is cross-reporting, and mostly the child abuse content, but we're also trying to include it in proclamations of all of the abuse categories, because it is something to be aware that if, if a woman or man is, is beating a dog, the preponderance of violence happening in that home is exacerbated.
One more thing that we feel that's very important, having that, the office in, in Clamath County for, for senior services is really difficult, and I understand Lake County kind of feels like it's left out sometimes on the decision-making, so. We feel, we have a board of directors, and we feel it's very important that our community leaders have a say-so for their community on that board. So I would like to extend an invitation to you, or someone you may recommend, to be a member on our board to have more say-so for the community. So contact me for more information, I'd be glad to send it to you.
Can you give Denise your contact information?
Again, on the community-wide, how well are we expanding the education and knowledge base across a large county, a multitude of communities?
The Gatekeeper program's target is Lakeview and then North Clamath County. So in getting those two, we're trying to hit the larger, so if we go to Pacific Power, those workers are hitting your entire county. If we're educating the community of postal workers, they're, that is their service region. So what's beautiful about Gatekeeper is it starts with the education at a big organization, of which the workers are expanding throughout your county. So that's our first step, is to start with those all-staffs, you know, educating the employer to go ahead and pass that on. I love that she used the example of newspapers piling up, or overgrown lawn, and typically, it's not overgrown. What does a postal worker play in social services to help, you know, let us know that somebody is struggling, or there could be someone in distress? So the Gatekeeper program expands to all of your county, all of your, your cities within. And we're starting slowly. The region spans from Lake all the way up to Wasco. It's kind of one of those weird regional lines, Clamath, Lake, Deshues, Crook, Jefferson, Wasco, Sherman, Gillum. We're all lumped into this one region for ADRC. So there's strong representation for Clamath and Lake to make sure that we're not lost in that huge region. We hope to go on a hard launch on September 1st, so give us a little bit of loading the resources in that ADRC. We're working on it literally the whole month of July to make sure that it's representative of our counties.
Expand, you said hard launch.
The publicly, newspapers, everybody's going to be in the public pie instead of just doing the employers. We want to get it all built up for us to have them know it, that, what it's about, before the newspaper announces that, oh, here's the ADRC program, what is it? So, but the community will already know.
And earlier, you mentioned like postal service employees and Pacific Power. You also include Surprise Valley and Midstate?
Oh, sure. We're going to try, and that's, there is also a number on this brochure of, of our number to get us to come over and do the presentation to them. We started last week with a few of your agencies here, and we want you to call us now to say, yes, come to, come to our employee meeting once a month, or, you know, come to the training at our staff meeting, whatever, whatever works for you. We're able to do that for you.
And as far as reaching out, you're here in front of county representatives, city of Paisley is incorporated, and of course, the town. All you're going to do, you know, have some interaction with the town councilors?
We just need to know who to contact, to make sure that we get that, that information.
Well, Kim, along those lines, because when we talked about population, we talked about, you know, bigger employers, and I think that's where Commissioner Kestner was going earlier. Christmas Valley is a growing, expanding area.
Absolutely.
It's close to as big a populated area as we have in the county. I don't know if the chamber, Commissioner Kestner's been to the chamber meetings, but business is typically represented there. I think that'd be a good thing, if we could reach out to them.
Chambers is a great idea. So we might reach out email-wise as we build that resource directory, too. That Gatekeeper's responsible for reaching both the counties, and, and we'd like to have a systematic approach to hitting the largest population with the minimal FTE that we have. So that's a great idea. The chamber encompasses a huge group of businesses, so it's a lot of stones with one visit. Can I get a quick picture to send up to the state with the commissioners and the parties represented?
Sure.
Please.
Would you sit?
I promised I would.
Real quickly, next Thursday on the 11th, the Community Health Improvement Program, the CHIP program, that's being managed at the hospital, there's a North Lake. In Christmas Valley, they're having a community-wide meeting next Thursday at 5:30.
Okay, we need John today, so we'll make sure.
I'm sure Ann can get you information on that.
And not to back up too far, but back to Mandy's conversation, I wanted to make sure everyone understood that Adult Protective Services, Clamath covers Lake County, or I should say Summer Lake South. And there currently is an inter-office agreement where Clamath and Lake County staff adult protective service cases with the BAND office and a lot of times the Deschutes branch, Bander, Lapine, Adult Protective Services covers the north end of the county. So, I think those staffs that Mandy gave you truly, truly do reflect pretty much just Lakeview. And there have been some referrals that, I'll be honest with you, the primary is the Sheriff's Department, they work in conjunction with the Deschutes Adult Protective Services Unit. So, those stats for the county could actually be higher.
I'm sure.
Yeah.
And if you're curious, I can data mine that info for you. I know with child abuse, that one year, you were really curious about where it's concentrated or where most of the reports. An elected official, it's good to know where that concentrated area is. And I worked Deschutes, Crook and Jefferson as well, so we could better combine that if that's an interest in you.
Yeah, child abuse always touches a nerve with me because it has an effect that lasts a lifetime in a child as a grown older. So, I'm really keen on that. But also I have a question as far as identifying without crossing the line of privacy and others.
Absolutely.
Can you just touch on that a little bit?
Well, certainly, and of course that's the first thing, like for a postal worker, they know the person's name, so anonymously they can send the name, A P D can go up and do a hello, knock on the door just to see what's going on, that'd be the first contact. So, they don't have to be involved for confidentiality and they won't know what happens after that, they just made that initial call that something's not right.
Kind of links to the Good Samaritan of a village and us watching out for, and the identification is really hard when our elders are isolated. And so, a lot of times, I'm thinking of a Chillicothe case, she wasn't discovered for three days and she had fallen in her bathtub and she had literally couldn't get up. Then a community health worker happened to go by because he was on her radar. So, it's cases like that of folks who are not connected with natural supports that could, you know, isolation's a factor and that's a really good example, is our utility workers, our public workers, where they could like say, hey, you know, George hasn't been seen in a while.
And we also, with our Meals on Wheels program, we have a case manager who manages that if the driver calls us right away, if someone's not home when they're supposed to be, nobody answers the door for maybe just that one day. And then we have a information on that person, a who-to-call in case of emergency and we're on it within an hour to make sure that person's okay. And there's some cases where they weren't okay, but at least we checked on them, so it's, we already have it kind of in place for the programs we already have, so this is just to broaden that out for everyone.
So, Jill, before you take that picture, I'm assuming we want...
I told you to do your hair.
I got my two hair.
I'm assuming we need to do the proclamation today?
That would be great.
And probably read it for the record?
That'd be great.
And since I've got a kind of a rug, I'll let you do the honor. I mean, on the upswing, yeah. If you would, so please, sir.
Okay. In the matter of proclaiming June 15th, 2015 as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lake County, whereas thousands of vulnerable seniors and people with disabilities are victimized every year by financial exploitation, physical, sexual and emotional abuse or neglect, and whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all culture and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way in poor neighborhoods in suburbia, and whereas these incidents of abuse and neglect take place in the home and in facilities and are perpetuated by family members, friends, caregivers and strangers, and whereas elder abuse is grossly under-reported because the elderly who are being abused find it very difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid, and whereas signs of animal abuse and neglect are often early warning signs of seniors' need for assistance, all citizens are encouraged to work together in reporting animal cruelty for the welfare and safety of our vulnerable seniors and people with disabilities, and whereas the Oregon law enforcement community, adult protective services, service staff and advocates have forged a stronger working relationship through community-based, multi-disemployer teams to prevent and prosecute abuse and neglect, and whereas Oregonians need to be better informed on preventive measures and the indicators of abuse and neglect, now therefore be it proclaimed by the Lake County Board of Commissioners that June 15th, 2015 is designated as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lake County. We encourage all citizens of Lake County to unite as a community to support our aging and peoples with disabilities, during and dated this day and the second day of June 2015.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not on our agenda tomorrow, is it Denise? Like for us to at least make note of it, we have a regular session in Fort Rock tomorrow. So, for us to actually address this also at that session.
Thanks.
Any of you going to be present in Fort Rock tomorrow?
Nope, I'm running around here today and tomorrow all day.
I could try and be.
Is that where you're wanting to approve it then?
We can, but we can reiterate it tomorrow.
That would be great. And then you're helping identifying who needs that cross lateral education would be great.
Yeah.
All right, do you guys want to get up, take your chance at a state photo op?
We have a vacant chair.
Oh, that's okay.
Somebody needs to...
No, no, get up there.
Go ahead Jill.
Oh, heel tip. Do you want to remove the Brad Winter's leg?
You want to turn it off?
There you go.
That's a future aspiring public service.
All right, one, two, three, look at me. Works for the kids.
So, is this picture with the board commissioners or is this picture with future seniors?
You know, we call this, we call this aging, nobody just turned sixty yesterday. Only changed it from seniors to aging, so I know I aged on my way over because we're all one last over.
Well, life is, is an aging process, second by second from conception on. It's no big deal, one year of milestone we get.
And although we have seen the age and demographic, the shift in demographic nationwide, we're seeing more of that in Lake County because it's becoming a popular retirement spot. We have seen an increase in the population of seniors, forty-four percent in the past twelve years. So, this is the largest growing demographic that we have and it's growing beyond the pace of, I say, what we're seeing in the rest of the country. So, that leaves our population especially vulnerable. If we've seen thirteen cases in, in Lakeview, then that would extrapolate to about fifty-two cases through the county, if you were to, I say, just do that as an extrapolation. And that, that becomes, that sounds pretty painful, considering how small our population is.
You keep doing special openings of the theater, I'm pretty sure more people move here. Can I tell you what I want to show?
Well...
I'll move the kids over.
We welcome all retirees and we also welcome all future retirees.
Thank you gentlemen.
Thank you. We should go ahead since this is right as of today.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
I just wanted to just express, as far as Adult Protective Services go, I cannot start my cases unless someone's elder is considered when they're sixty-five or older. It's a little different than services, I just wanted to clarify that. But I do all investigations on people who are physically disabled as well, doesn't matter the age, as long as they're over eighteen.
About eighteen.
Thank you. Motion made, I'll second the motion to proclaim June 15th as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lake County. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're gonna wait for our second public hearing, so...
Yeah. Well, that was a topic that we did, we'll discuss. So, the next public hearing is 9:30. We still have open public hearing on the budget if we want to. But the public hearing on temporary marijuana moratorium ordinance, number 109, which the county have had a moratorium on dispensaries and such, looks expired, so this is reinstating or renewing until the state comes up with their own rules so that we don't impose some land use regulations that would just be contradictive to the state. So, it's to kind of maintain a status quo until the state comes up and then we abide by what the state says. So, like through January?
No, actually, Commissioner, it's through August 19th right now. Legal counsel has advised us, because this is dealing with medical, and he's advised us that we can't do it indefinitely and we will revisit it before August 19th, short extensions.
Is this where you just regulate the time and manner, where you have to come up with regulations for time and manner of the facility?
It's gonna be interesting to see how many come before the county as opposed to the two municipalities.
Right. Depends on where they want to locate.
Yeah, I'm sure that the north end of the county is a candidate.
How different are the rules between the town and county?
I haven't briefed myself on the counties.
It's a huge issue over my...
Oh, yeah.
Can you get those copies of the... It's filed over there.
Yeah.
You're gonna get Commissioner Miners to sign it? Yeah.
Can I get your copies of what she handed out? I can make copies and get them back to you.
So, anyway, public hearing is open on the ordinance, temporary marijuana moratorium. I'll leave it open for a while. Ten o'clock is I T, it's looked for ten. Well, we've got Jake here, work crew informant position request, can you elaborate on that for us, please?
Sure. Thank you for your time, Commissioners. Historically, in Beaverton, Lake County, Lake County Community Justice, as well as Lake County Property and Land, we've had a shared position with Michael Polk, who's worked part-time, work crew, part-time, candidate in properties. Because the increase in workload for work crew, as well as the increase in workload for property and lands, I know Parkland, San Jose, David was previously put before the board and asked for that position to go full-time, so I'm here seeking permission to hire my person full-time as well. Some of the jobs that we tackled this last year has been, we do a lot of work, we needed a lot of work done around our county lands, down around the ancient buildings. We also do work around Rose Horse Drew's, Anna, Out Plush, Plush School. We've entered into a really solid working relationship with Warner Creek in that currently right now they have about seventy, about seventy-five quarter wood, if not more than that, sitting out there on the playgrounds right now, that we are moving to our wood locations so that we get names that come up and our regular customers, we can deliver that wood to indigent seniors as well as indigent veterans.
Can you tell me where our location is?
Our current work location is the ancient building in the Chainlink Fence District. As soon as we get the new building down here on Second Street, North Second, where the sheriff's compound is, once we get that fenced in, we're, Community Justice is gonna help offset some of the costs for the fencing, we're gonna remove our wood program there so we can clean up the ancient building. This last winter, we've had wood stored at the fairgrounds inside some of the sheds, that's all cleaned out and that was a prep for fair season. We've got a lot of work.
We have other locations too Jake, throughout the county that you do wood storage.
We do have storage locations in Paisley, we have a storage location as well as in Christmas Valley to serve the North Lake area and the central, central Lake area.
So, do we have a list, do you have a list of, of opportunities, work opportunities that fit within this program?
Absolutely.
Could I get a copy of that sometime?
Of our work room?
No, of the programs that fit within the guidelines of what would be community service work, is it just anything?
No, it's government as well as any nonprofit. So, government, for service, county, state, and then nonprofit, so community society.
Well, I know you've done some work for the city of Paisley.
We have, we've done a lot of work for the city of Paisley, we do Plush School, we've done a lot of work around the North Lake area, we've done a lot of work out at Drew's, done a lot of work around Anna. Our busy season around Drew's and Anna is usually after the big, big weekend, Memorial Weekend, Lady Day Weekend, Fourth of July Weekend, but we're out there prepping, sanding, painting. We did some work for the, for the pool, for the town recently, we sanded and scraped and then we painted all the bleachers, wood bleachers, right up there by the pool. So, we do work for the baseball field, for Lily, we do some work on the baseball fields. So, we're, we're kind of limited in what we can do right now because we only have it running two days a week. Once we go full-time, we'll be running four days a week and that will also include one day a month for juvenile apartments as well, for juvenile clients to go out and take a look. And our schedule planned for the busy season, which is late spring, all summer and early fall, will be Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, so we can catch those folks that work Monday through Friday, a lot of our clients are employed at the mills, they work Monday through Friday, so we can't get a break to go out and improve. On Saturday, they'll have that opportunity. Then during the winter months, in the afternoon, we'll be Monday through Friday, then spread out so we can help do some snow removal. But we're not gonna focus a lot on snow removal because I'm not, I'm not interested in, we have clients that remove snow for money, that's their winter job and they're laid off and doing something else, so I don't want to peed on their, on their buck, when we can do it for free and they're getting paid for it, but we're available, just as much as the prison is.
How do you differentiate on that topic of not competing? Obviously, the ones that you would do snow removal would be a person who has minimum income, but how do you define that separation?
We, we get referrals, just like our firewood program, we'll get referrals from Charlie Pike, our veterans officer, and then also the senior center ranger, which we'll get referrals from them, from the senior center as well, both North and South. So, we're not just limited to Lakeview, we're county-wide, we're mobile.
Also, currently, it's a half-time position and it's been shared with the county half-time employee network that he's going full-time and you'll go full-time on the, on the work crew person. And if I saw it to be no general funds spent on this, can you elaborate on the funding for that position, just for the audience?
It'll be committee corrections dollars, which is state monies that come through our , any government agreement, the department corrections, it's our monies.
And that's sustainable over time?
Excuse me?
And you anticipate that to be sustainable?
I, unfortunately, unfortunately I do, as long as there's crime and there's two folks on supervision, the money will be there.
We'll cover this tomorrow. Another item for you is the Oregon Department of Revenue, County State Collection, can you expand on that, please?
Historically, this agreement had been entered... Historically, this agreement had been entered into with the Oregon Department of Revenue, Clamath Lake. One, there's been a couple of things that have come up over the last two and a half year, two years since we split from Clamath County. Just little things that we overlooked, that we need to make that separation, and this is one of those. So this agreement has already been in place for many, many, many years. It was Clamath Lake, so Katie Parker Rose, all her information was signed on that. So little, little Department of Revenue one-on-one, we have folks on supervision that owe supervision fees. There's some treatment costs and some urinalysis fees that they're not able to catch up on. But they've completed everything, they've been successful in everything. We don't want to hold those folks on supervision because they owe us money. They've been successful, we want to recoup as much money as we can from them right then and there. But we're not gonna hold someone on supervision because they owe these funds. So we will turn those, in turn, turn those over to Department of Revenue, Department of Revenue goes after them one way or another and collects those funds. And then Department of Revenue keeps a certain percentage of it for their work and then returns the rest of it to Lake County. So that money comes back to us. And that's been ongoing ever since we split. We've got our money that we've turned over, it's just the language on the contract has been signed by Clamath. So all we're doing is we're just cleaning up some that was overlooked two and a half years ago when we split from Clamath.
Basically, for the audience, we used to have a contract with Clamath County probation to, to administer probation over LA. So with the Howard U, we split that and this is just a follow-up, cleaning it up.
Yep.
We're all gonna clean up.
Okay, we'll take that tomorrow.
Thank you, Jake. You betcha.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your time, John.
Still a little bit before ten o'clock, which is another time item on IT infrastructure. And then we've got ten forty-five on yours.
Yeah, I'm hoping we'll pull through the other stuff.
Well, we can't address it until it's timed.
So, guess we'll take a break.
Just gonna, we could, we could, we could cover any liaison update or department updates.
Yeah, we could.
Oh, yeah, we have additions.
He's waiting for Tom, I did send him an email to see if Tom can be here earlier. Previously anticipated.
Could you wrote, uh, power?
Dave says Tom will be here shortly, so, but I can go grab Darren.
Yeah, necessary.
Last, last break of land last night.
Did you get some rain yesterday?
Just a few drops.
It poured down rain all day and, just poured down rain.
Kind of went around as our sun works down in Northern California, my way back to Landis last night called. You could hear his motion wire was like full blast.
Yeah, it was high last, but yesterday, maybe it was just coming down. And stopped about, must've stopped about Summer Lake.
It's supposed to be what the summer's like. Three hours of winter. Me, which is good.
Not for us.
Well, that's true, it doesn't work for solar as well. Well, that's, rain we had a couple weeks ago was referred to as more than a million dollar rain as far as the farming and ranching communities. Darwin, Kevin, the nuisance updates.
Yeah, the nuisance is, Dr. Thomas back, we closed out before the David Dern woman. Well, he was one of the quite sorry, but the story one out there, Lake Elaine and Summer Lake, that's, that's been closed out, we already discussed that one. But the one that was in Christmas Valley, I got a letter back from William Osborne. Who said he's, who's gotten things done to a satisfactory manner. I haven't yet called to check with the neighbors to see if the Herald was satisfied, but they haven't obviously manned up there yet. But from what he says in his letter that he's done, it's, there's no one.
Is this the one right in the community?
Yeah, it's right off Christmas Valley highway, round corner.
Just vicinity of that escrow about there.
Yeah, yeah, right, the first road, that first corner, that's the escrow. So from what he says he's done, I think the nuisance is complete on that.
Tomorrow, me and Four Rock, we'll drive by and technically.
Yeah, possibly, it's a good one, that'll be great. And then the other one was the West Side store just drove out of this morning, it is, it's cleaned up as well, so.
Really?
That's a really nice thing. And Sharon Warner, who has been the lead on this, she was, she was out walking her outside. So I've been talking to her for a minute and she was completely satisfied.
Excellent.
Yeah, so, and Russ said, Russ was sort of, had come in and kind of wrote what he had done. And so I just verified it this morning, so.
That's excellent.
On that, we've got road vacations coming up here in a couple of weeks. And then tonight, the planning commissions have a following up, follow-up meeting to the meet, the regular scheduled planning commission meeting. Which happened on the nineteenth for the zoning norms update. That was the first event here and this is the follow-up. They should have recommendation to you by this evening. And then we'll have that hearing hopefully on the seventeenth, which is already pre-scheduled. We'll continue moving forward, so. Oh, one last update, my end cell yesterday, I've already talked to each of you individually, but we had seventy, almost seventy-five properties that were being sold. There were twenty-five from previous years, but about fifty from just this last October, November when we received from the back years list. The normal list that we get every year. We only sold five, which isn't uncommon to not sell, sell that many at the first sale. It's sixty percent because quickly it drops to forty percent in two weeks. So we sold five for a total sales price of a hundred and thirty-one thousand on those five properties. And two were sold under contract, so the thirds, because they were over twenty thousand dollars, we were able to do that according to our policy, so. Pretty exciting, collected seventy, seventy thousand dollars just.
Back on the business, a lot of time, I like the way it's been working of recent. We give notice and the landlords take it upon themselves to abide by it. That's the most positive way of addressing nuisances, as opposed to having, to have enforcement actions.
There was a, you know, code violation in the pipeline that we've had before. And that's already been cleaned up as well, verified that on Saturday.
So back to the Christmas Valley escrow, we had someone that submitted a letter on that. Are we gonna be able to communicate with them just to do the same and make sure that?
On all of this, buddy.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Just a few minutes, Tom and Dave, on the topic of airport management agreement. For the sake of the camera audience, can you brief us?
Okay. It's the airport management agreement we, that's up for renewal, we invited it, put it together and. Next, we need approval and agreement with the county officials.
And this is basically agreement with you, Tom, to manage our county airport, basically, yeah, like you.
We've all, I know, reviewed the agreement and you two worked on it and.
We made changes and the fix and the council's looked at it, you made some changes.
As well. Now, we didn't originally have it on the agenda, basically don't for tomorrow either, but I think we should, we're gonna have to have approval.
For tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yeah.
That's what we're, we'll take action tomorrow.
So, for the audience, so for what period of time is this agreement?
Agreement for another two years.
We'll be very pleased with your management of our airport, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You've been doing a lot of support. Tom has been here, had a lot, a lot of good things to happen at the airport. Things to come too.
Lots of things to come.
Are there, anything that we need to know about as far as what needs to be done, but it's a go ahead with resources at this time?
Well, we need new hangar, main hangar, we, no, I'm just kidding.
Within, within practice company?
I think resources wise, we're, we're doing well with what needs to happen out there. We did get the, the rear door, which was not a planned deal to start with there. Is that, that is ordered and it's in process for being built, so.
So along those lines, just it has nothing to do with our contract. But since we're talking about that, I know I talked to Dave a little bit about a modified door back there. Did we look at doing that? So we didn't have as big a door, since we didn't need as big a door for a secondary door?
Well, the cost, from what I found as far as the overall cost was, it would've been pretty cost prohibitive to, to actually shrink the door down. Because by the time we framed that in, the expense of all framing and everything was gonna be as much as putting the door in. And the, and the deal is, is that hangar, where it's set up with a door on each end. If that hangar ever, say we build our own hangar here in a year or two. And we want to use that for leasing to, to private people with their aircraft. We're only gonna be able to get two aircraft in there probably if we shrink that door down. If we leave a full-sized door, we can open from either end and definitely get the revenue from three or four aircraft in that hangar, depending on the size of the aircraft.
Well, I don't remember our discussion, but it had something to do with height and width of the typical aircraft to make sure you're not that good right now. You could throw three aircraft, it seems like, through that door when it's open. Just, so you, you explore that.
Yeah, well, yeah, we talked about that. And we've got, we had a company coming in with the pilatus for the air flights, the emergency flights. And they were looking at possibly wanting to squeeze one of those pilatus in there. And if we have the full width door across the back, we can just squeeze that aircraft in there. So from a maintenance point of view, I mean, we have turbine maintenance, that way we've got a spot where we can actually have a based airplane here for the EMS staff. So they're, in fact, they're in review of whether or not that's gonna work financially for their company and to get back to us on that. So if we put the smaller door, that would also cripple that from being able to have.
Sure. This was an idea.
Sure.
Maintain the best options.
Yeah.
And for the audience, we're talking about the west door to the main hangar. Which is a World War II vintage and all things tweaks after a while, so it's correcting that problem.
Yeah, people can fall on someone or something, so.
But we'll address that agreement tomorrow.
Thanks.
Ten o'clock again, IT infrastructure discussion, Brad, welcome.
Thank you. Actually, that's perfect. It's him, Bob.
We've been waiting for this. Give us a brief.
Okay, so I wanted to make this as simple as possible. And not get carried away, so I'll try and behave myself here. What we were looking at is option one and option two on the drawing here. And the idea was, we were asked to, what would it take to make connections or, as I would say, build a campus here at the, at the county? Now, the county connections would be to Public Health, Mental Health, Fairgrounds and Roads Department. And bring them into the county network. And we're really, with the Sheriff's Evidence Building, that's really not a project yet that I know of. So we won't get into what's required because they have their own set of requirements because they are who they are. And so to meet those requirements, that's a whole, whole different ballgame. For Public Health, Mental Health, Fairgrounds and Roads Department, we went out, we, we thought it would be cost-effective to build a wireless connection. Use air fiber, whatever the case might be.
From the courthouse to the outlading.
Yeah. What we found was, maybe not so inexpensive after all. Because you could make a connection from here to Public Health. And then they might move, correct, if that building sells. So that's a, a lot of money to lay down for one connection. The other entities, Mental Health, Fairgrounds and Roads Department, we did have some certified technicians get up on the roof and do line of sight. And there wasn't a line of sight, either trees or buildings were in the way. So what they would have to do is point from this building up to Black Cap, actually put a repeater up on Black Cap. And then build out the connections to Mental Health, Fairgrounds, and Roads Department. And that's where a good size of that expense would come, probably about thirty some thousand dollars. And we had a couple of vendors come in and, and just give us a look, see, we, we didn't issue an RFP or anything at this point, it was just exploratory. And basically, both of them came back when it was a little over a hundred thousand, the other was about a hundred and forty thousand. Yeah, that's a lot of money. Now, when you build out a campus like we've done in other counties, there are some options down the road. And this would be something, once we get this all laid out. Then if you really seriously wanted to build this campus, campus infrastructure, we look at a three to five-year plan on doing that. In the meantime, we need to take care of these departments and we need to have a base connection with those departments. And we need to bring them up to speed because currently they're on technology circa two thousand, two thousand three. Very old technology, which we need to bring up to speed and we can make a real base connection to the county courthouse. And the way we would do that is option two. And what option two is, is they use the current connections that they have to the internet now. So that would be through Goose Lake, TNET or CenturyLink or your local providers. If you wanted to get it more expensive, then you could look at Hunter and, and LSN networks. But you're quite a jump, as you see, LSN is six fifty a month for a fast fiber connection under option one. What we're looking at for the local connections are all under a hundred dollars. We look at Public Health, they have a connection currently through Goose Lake. Mental Health has a connection through Gobi, which is a state connection for their internet, which hopefully we can use. Fairgrounds, I believe they're on one of the above, CenturyLink, is that right?
Correct, so it's Road Department.
And Road Department are on CenturyLink. So what we can do is we can leverage those connections by putting a, an updated server. With a UPS in each one of those locations, they all need new servers. And then, and the Roads Department, of course, will need a switch and a few other things. But they need a new server and then we will leverage that connection that they currently have. And what I mean by leverage is we're gonna take that connection and we're gonna do some tweaking with that server to communicate with the server here at the county. And that way, we can actually back their files up to the county server over that slow connection and do it at night. The other thing that we were looking at, if you'll see, there's a thing that says I Drive below the server on option two. You have server UPS, thirty-six hundred bucks, below that is I Drive. What I Drive is, is it is a remote cloud backup system that meets HIPAA and all the federal regulations and state regulations. And they encrypt the data. And the data that these departments have is small enough that we could do an off-site backup to this I Drive cloud solution.
Mental Health currently uses I Drive?
Yes, we set them up with I Drive last year.
It's very cost-effective and does exactly.
So, I'm thinking as I'm listening to Brad and looking at the spreadsheet, you are recommending option two?
Um, no, but I'm recommending option two at this point. I'm just kidding, I'm sorry. It was a long drive. By the way, there were no deer until I hit town and then a buck and a doe ran right in front of me, it's like, you gotta be kidding me.
Within the city limits?
Within the city limits, yeah. It was past the Shell station by the.
Didn't make out the word because we did tell him to jump.
That thing, well, you wanted to wake me up more again, you did a good job.
Yeah, the buck two days ago visiting Howard's Drug Store.
Is there? But anyway, I, I really, we really think that option two is probably something that needs to be done fairly soon. Because.
An IT person is.
Out of.
I am, I would like to touch base a little bit on what. I would like to touch base a little bit on what each department needs. Public Health right now, their server is, we're hoping and praying that it does not fail before we can get a new one in place, so.
So do we have that in the works?
That's what I'm asking you for today, to see if we can get that rolling.
We have to.
We were on hold until we determined which direction we wanted to go by spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars to do connections. We thought, all of us, kind of like.
But we do have a line of sight with Public Health.
Yeah, if we did that, but if they're going to move, we would have just spent eleven thousand bucks for.
Yeah.
The other one would be, that really concerns me is Mental Health. I mean, not only are they mental over there, but we got to work on that server. They're on a very old, old server of, that has been discontinued by Microsoft, and it pretty much was about to breathe its last breath here a couple of weeks ago, and Jim revived it. We need to do something there.
So will that be a mental health purchase?
I'll need to talk to. Yeah, I'll need to talk to them and make sure that's what they're planning to do.
I don't know if it is or not.
Well.
We did talk to them, he does know.
I'm just going to suggest that we go with your recommendation and do a pretty good survey of Public Health. And if we have a discussion with them, we do it. And we do all these fixes that need to be done and are being recommended.
Well, if you look at these four departments here, it does establish a connection with the county. So we can do local backups. It does establish some security, which we want to do, some authentication, which brings them in and helps us on the security side. And bang for the buck, you're not talking a great outlay of cash to make that happen. And they're up to date, they're up to speed with what we're doing here in the courthouse and up at the annex, and it just is a big benefit for the county for us to do that. As opposed to, if you, when we build a campus, it's going to be multiple years to build a campus out like we would, we've done in the other counties. It just takes time.
It takes time.
We could, we're close.
Time and a lot of money, yeah.
Close enough to the end of the year that potentially, probably, we could pay out of next year if that's, works better. We're just, we're very nervous about servers. Road Department, they've added, they've got multiple computers out there. They are not on a network, so Bob's been kind of trying to jimmy it to make sure everybody can talk to one another on computers. So it's, it's at your discretion.
There is. They don't have a server out at the Roads Department right now. They've got a non-communication.
And they're going to, Rick will be picking up that purchase price. And I don't know how to put this into a motion exactly. Maybe Brad, you or Denise can state that, what you're recommending we do in its entirety related to servers, related to option two.
Okay.
And we don't have it on tomorrow's agenda. I think, Commissioner, we should take action today and let you work on the details of, don't let the time of year hang us up if we know we might have a server that crashes before it corroborates enough to get us into it.
Okay. I would say your motion should just say for us to move forward for those departments to be self-sustaining on their IT needs.
With haste.
As per that, I'll make that motion.
Second. Yeah, it's critical that we maintain those servers. No one transpired here a year or so ago.
Oh, yeah. Any other discussion?
May I ask a question for clarification then?
Okay. Maybe you will.
Well, currently, Public Health and Mental Health have a server and a switch and a connection to the outside world, and that lives on a server. Currently, the Fairgrounds and the Road Department do not. So it would be implementing something new and different in those, not just maintaining protected existing servers. So I mean, that's just a little variation from maybe what I heard in the discussion here. So just so you know, they're, two of these don't have any kind of a server option now or solution now.
My motion was intended for Denise to work with those departments and with AgTech to remedy the situation and get us some.
Would they need to be self-sustained?
And get their own.
Except for.
Okay.
Okay.
Within budget.
So get us some servers.
On paper, I'm available on it. It's Denise, mostly there.
Really, thank you.
On all four departments.
Awesome.
Jim's got a knowingness of technology. But I was wondering what we did with the ILC and Paisley and stuff, with USDA telemedicine with Mental Health. When you go to do a bigger network for the county, would that be a grant opportunity through USDA rural development like we did at ILC? I mean, I don't know.
I don't know, I've never looked into it. I'd be happy to talk to you about that, though.
Yeah, because. It's a fifty percent grant, so it might help cover the bigger, I heard that you tried to.
On the Mental Health, you said that, that's a, in the medicine.
County Health and all, but.
A quick conversation with Phil Bradley before you retire or something.
Yeah.
Well, I think we can make justification that with health reasons, the sheriff's needs to be tied in, education.
Yeah, county commissioners need to be tied in.
How you tell stories and grants?
I would, I would love to talk to you about that.
Okay, yeah.
Jim is one of the storytellers in this county.
Why, he gets all the money.
USDA, it's a timing thing, but.
It's open right now, but if they look at it another year, when you get ready to do the things. I don't know if he's entirely, not really well.
I know we're scheduled to do something.
We're pushing.
Thanks, Brad.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, appreciate it. So Denise, there isn't anything being covered that would keep us from moving forward in what you.
That's why I threw that self-sustaining in, because they all have their own individual needs. One has a switch, one doesn't.
Yeah, individual sequences. So last item is the Rural Renewable Energy Development Zone, and it's in forty-five. I suggest every take a ten-minute break. Omar. Jim, do you have something to?
Well, I came here for several things. You commented about public hearing on the budget, and then the Marijuana Moratorium, I was wondering what that was about, considering the new developments that was going on, might go in. And then I've seen Todd was on here for renewable energy, of course, I'm interested. I don't know if I'd need to be here for that.
Well, he's got two, Todd has two projects he's coming to force. The moratorium, I don't know if you caught all that, but it's a continuation of the medical marijuana moratorium on.
Dispensaries.
Dispensaries, and no one knows where any of that stuff's going right now, so we're just.
That's why I was curious, going, how, you know, I thought it was tied to the new stuff. We don't even know, so I was kind of curious, that's always curiosity.
There's no intent to impede the private enterprise of forty-second rule. It's just for us not to institute some land use regulations that just get overturned whenever the state comes up with errors.
Can I ask you, do I need to be here for Todd's?
Not really, it's, he's going to expand on Black Cap, the young one up on Fossil Lake Road, Fremont, all be approved through the land, planning use. What I was looking at is, one is to exempt for the renewable energy zone, the requirement to have full time deployment. Exempt that. I didn't see in the unit, typically that is a three-year tax exempt, and I think you mentioned something about maybe asking for a five-year.
Yeah, they didn't ask for that.
And I, in quick review, I didn't see that addressed in the paperwork there, but.
A little bit of email stuff I saw last week, the conversations you all were having. The email I saw, I thought dealt with a five-year, so much per kilowatt hour similar to a project out at the airport.
I just didn't see it on the paperwork for us today.
Well, and I don't know that legal counsel's of good business either, but. As you know, if it fits, Jim, relative to your question, we have been on record as supporting these things. But when it doesn't fit, we've had other views.
Anything for us that new and exciting coming down the road?
Well, you know, I think, as I emailed Dan yesterday, the agreement that we got to Collins, and I talked to Bobby Carlin a lot this morning, is I'm hoping we finally cross that problem of local contractors. And as I told Bobby, I mean, I'm proud of the work we do, but we're getting national awards, and yet our, for Claverty, yet our forest is like this. What's the rest of the people look like? I mean, you know, I just go, I can't, I, we've got so big a steps to make to this. But I think we're on the right tracks with extending the planning areas to a hundred thousand acres and doing all those things. But it's been a long road to get there, you know, so. And if they're holding us at high standards, I go, wow, I'm sure that I'm not one of those other counties or wherever.
So Jim, it was a good idea then that you visited with Lee because the pendulum is swinging a bit.
Yes. So pleased to hear that.
Yes.
That's, that's what would make this really work. I still got qualms that, under the CFLR, that the budget group is isolated and to determine local, whose local contractor is, that they're not abiding by the intent there. So I definitely plan on keeping my eye on that, but this should solve that too.
Well, it should, but I think we need to go back like we did before and just have that visit. And when the offer comes for us to identify the local contracts area, we do that, and we just make it firm.
Because as I read the intent of the legislation, how drafted even, it was locals would have an input into that. We've never had that, and that's what I think.
Well, and ninety-five percent of the contracting needs to be local contracting, and the local contracting, as you alluded to, needs to be defined by the local area, so.
So that's something to just keep an eye on.
Appreciate your diligence on that.
So that's about it.
Well, we'll take a ten-minute recess, maybe stretch back to fifteen even.
So I saw where you signed up on the doodle poll for a public strategy get-together. That's good. I sent Amy, or I left Amy a voice message this morning. I think it's probably by looks of the signees.
We are just finishing up the acquisition of some, put some extra land down there. We'll be coming in front of the, I think in front of the board, making the plan, I should, to vacate some streets and alleyways to clean that, clean that OBL land, similar to what we did with the Black Cat project. And then that project, we're hoping that will get underway this fall, kind of overlapping with our Old Mill project. And then, and then the second project is up in Christmas Valley, and we're in discussions with a large Oregon utility to off-take the power for that project. And it's, it could be a combination of two projects up there, but certainly at least one of the projects. So one of the projects we're talking about today is the Fremont Solar Project. That's an 8-megawatt site. That project could turn into an 18-megawatt project, because we might fold in another project. So, but we wanted to come in front of you today to, to get the, you know, it's time to get the abatement and so forth in place before we do anything that becomes a breaking ground.
So Mr. Rager, you're giving us updates. Are you in a position to give us some updates on the airport project?
The airport project is still, we are talking to interested parties on that. A large project, big project, that's $100 million. A large project, big project, that's a hundred million dollar project. So, it's gonna take more time to get a, you know, get a deal on it. But we're anticipating that project's gonna be a late 2016, 2017 project. We still have to do the, all the studies and so forth that we need to do on that. So, we're still moving forward on it full steam. There is some legislation pending at the legislature that will help that project regarding a production-based incentive. When the state buys the green attributes to offset its coal, coal usage, power that it uses. That bill is currently in the Joint Ways and Means Committee, so we're trying to, there's some negotiating going on right now, so we'll see when that comes out. We remain optimistic. You never know what's gonna happen.
Back to what we had.
Yeah, so we have, excuse me, two projects where we're trying to get the, the red zone abatement and a further abatement for an extra two years based on a negotiated agreement with the county. Very similar, I'd say the same as what we've done on our Old Mill project in Klamath County, where it's my understanding, the way this, the way this worked in, works and the way it has worked in Klamath County is we've put in application for a standard red zone application, three-year application, where we're in a quest of waiver for the employment requirement to hire one employee, full-time employee. And that provides, approval of that provides a three-year abatement, okay? That alone, is this a three-year abatement, they're gonna go to regular taxation a year, four and five, if that's all we wanted to do. We prefer to do a five-year abatement and then to negotiate with the county to get the extra fourth and fifth year of abatement, we're proposing, the same as we did with Klamath County, to pay the county five thousand dollars per megawatt for each project.
And that's for all five years?
Yes, for five years. So, for example, the eight-megawatt project, the Black Cat Two project, that'd be forty thousand dollars per year for five years, and it'll ever go into, into regular taxation. We may revisit this agreement depending on what legislation, you know, what happens in the legislature with property tax abatements and rules, if it's to the beneficial interest of the county and, and us. I think, you know, to be to our benefit to, for like, whether we negotiate the agreement. But for now, the law is, you know, the law, and we're kind of working on current guidelines because nobody knows what the state is gonna do. So, what we have in front of you is two, two things for approval on two projects. One is the application and waiver of the, for the three-year abatement. And then, at the same time, there's a letter agreement for each project that we're reading primarily the same as changing the names and the numbers for the five thousand dollars per megawatt for each free year. The way, the way, the first abatement year is, so if we finish the project in 2016, the first abatement year would be 2017, then 2022, I guess it would be, and, you know, going forward. So, it's a pretty, pretty simple agreement, seems to work pretty well. One thing that's, that we've heard and we've recognized from other county leadership is the ability to use the funds, they're discretionary funds, so the county can use it for, you know, some projects where it's, you know, it's not necessarily designated to a specific tax district, so. Some counties have opted to split the tax up like they would a regular, do the taxing districts. Some counties like to have that discretionary authority to use it for, you know, the projects that may need, may have a need, so, you know, leave that up to the commissioners, of course, whatever you want.
Yeah, that's a separate decision.
Right. So, so that's what I have in front of you today. It's my understanding that you guys didn't get the, back to a agreement until this morning. I'm not sure where the discommunication, disconnect there was, but you have it now. I'm hoping that you can review it. It's only a page and a half, a little over a page agreement, hopefully you can review it and decide on it tomorrow. We, we have to, the reason for the urgency is because we have to get these agreements in place before we break ground, you know, that's in the law for the red zone. And, and we're doing some things that might be considered breaking ground here real shortly, so.
We will definitely address it tomorrow.
Great.
And just for the audience, the REIT zone is a rural renewable energy development zone. It's similar to the standard enterprise zone that we have around Lakeview area, except it covers whole county and it addresses renewable energy, Pacific.
All right. Okay, so any other questions?
No, do you have the originals on these, Todd? Because we're actually, it's just a minor detail, but it's dated May and the date's blank, we're gonna have to change that to June.
Scratch it.
Yeah. I'm guessing you request it, you change it to June and you initially?
Yeah, just initially, yeah. That was a handful, I was trying to crush a can, but.
Yeah.
Actually, I think I scratched it up there.
Did you get the copy? I've already forged the three commissioners' signatures on it. Did you get that last night?
What's that?
The copies have forged all the signatures and sent it off to you.
Yeah.
Thanks, Paul, sit away. Now, we will address it tomorrow. It's basically covering two projects, very similar. One is the waiver of the requirement for employment. The other is to discuss the three-years abatement and possibly for five-years abatement with community service fee of five thousand per megawatt.
Right, right. This is the same agreement used somewhere else, yeah?
Yeah, we've been through it a couple times.
Yeah. Pretty straightforward. No, shouldn't be any surprises.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
And as soon as we act on it tomorrow, we'll be in contact. You won't be there tomorrow.
I wouldn't have been there. So, you weren't, or what's going to be?
Oh, good, okay, great. You know where we're at.
Yeah, I mean, it'll be fine. Perfect. How is it, 10:30?
This is, um...
I believe that you are current, okay, we'll check it.
Yep. 10:30. Okay. Thanks, Todd. Back to our, today's agenda. We've left open the public hearing on the budget and public hearing on the marijuana moratorium. The, we also carry forth the hearing on both of those, but no, just on the budget tomorrow. So, on the budget hearing, we saw it today, and we're, we're in the budget hearing tomorrow. On the moratorium on the marijuana, that's what it's changed today, and we've got no comments, so I'll close that hearing. Any updates or legations or anything else for today?
Well, before you go there, Commissioner, tomorrow, I don't, and I'm probably just missing it, I'm not seeing the moratorium on the agenda.
Yeah, that was what I talked to you about earlier. I did not add it to tomorrow's agenda because it was an emergency. Mr. Bailey had asked.
So, you need to take action?
We don't have to, you can carry it forward for tomorrow, with Mr. Bailey is present since there's no public comment today that may be of any point, but.
Yeah, as far as the hearing, we closed today, I've got a suggestion, but we'll act on it tomorrow.
Okay, I'll add it on, okay.
Anything else for today?
Legations?
We have a handful, we had a great workforce conference meeting with all 22 member counties last week in Salem. I'll be on the conference call this afternoon, I volunteered and interviewed by conference call over the next number of months, because the reason for the workforce meeting with the existing TACO organization, the 22-member county organization, was to recognize and understand we had a lot of responsibility come the first of July, and we're in these new workforce areas, of which were the East Cascades workforce area, 10 member counties from Klamath Lake up to Columbia. But the TACO organization has been in place for a number of decades, and there's an awful lot of closeout in signing off on our fiscal responsibilities, our record-keeping, retention responsibilities, on and on and on, our service providers and their payments and how that's gonna be done, and where the, the transition for any known assets from the existing TACO organization to the different workforce organizations out there. So, it was a good timed meeting because everybody was just ready to move on to the new organizations and forget that we had a huge responsibility, and many of us remember back in the day, some eight years ago, when we had a situation with the federal government related to the Cleta organization. So, it was good, and I, as I said, I volunteered, there's five of us that will be working with the state of Oregon, the governor's office, the staff, the person that oversees the workforce program and the top organization, because there will be a couple of employees there for a number of months as we work through this closeout. And we get a signed declaration, a letter from the governor's office stating that we have met all of the requirements, because that's one of the things I asked Karen Hemelbach, who's one of the two representatives for the governor, is we can't just go on the statements saying, yeah, everything is fine. We need a certified letter stating for all member counties that it's done. So, next week, really quickly, I got a call from Gil Riddell, the last AOC regular meetings for the years, for the year, I'm on the legislative committee up there. I'm going to be going to a national intertribal timber symposium, it's just, it's a land-use symposium, it's over on the coast. Next week, they've invited me to speak at it. Worked with a gentleman from Grand Cooley Dam Reservation Area, DIA, for a number of years now with the Whiffler Committee, and he had invited me to speak about what's going on with all lands across the United States as a Whiffler member. And I told him I'd do that at the AOC Public Lands Meeting, so in my travels that way, I'm gonna go to the public lands and legislative committee meetings. There's a lot of forest health discussions that are gonna be taking place in the public lands, and they're gonna be carrying those on to the NACO Conference this summer, so it was kind of important. And so, that's kind of what's, what's up with what I'm doing.
To put the audience on the camera, I'll go back to the acronym TAC, T-O-C, it's the Oregon Consortium, that's what it stands for. As far as mine, still been engaged in these governor's sage con meetings, I missed today and yesterday's meetings, was trying to formulate some OARs, Oregon administrative rules, both in the US, not the US, but the state fish and water department, and in the state land conservation development department. We have another cattle, so it's coming along finally. We've been meeting quite a bit in the last couple of sessions, it's beginning to gel and come together. We have another meeting later this month, and all these meetings, and then hopefully to take another step toward wrapping that up. Meanwhile, I haven't got a fishing notice, but there's a, a governor's task force on natural gas distribution to rural communities, may be appointed to, it's, we have natural gas just four miles south of town and, so, we'll be happy to have at least a county commissioner from eastern Oregon, and I was the only one that volunteered, so that would maybe be on that road that gets going. That's about it for here.
Okay.
Anything else, Denise?
We have nothing else.
In six minutes after 11, meeting's adjourned.